...the first street, second street, and avenue J. Once they complete this shaving, I see no need to make a portion of first street a one-way street. And now on the second subject, I read that a city planner from right here in Snohomish County, the city of Muckelteo will replace Owen Dennison, who left the area for the quiet life on Whittie Island. And as you know, back in April, I opposed the city spending a whopping $22,000 for a private recruiter to hunt nationwide for Owen's replacement. The recruiter hired was the Prothman Company. And I believe it was only Councilman Wild who agreed with me, or at least he questioned the wisdom of not looking first in Snohomish County for local talent before hiring a nationwide headhunter. However, the rest of the council rubber stamped the expensive process recommended by city manager Valman. Coincidentally, the new planning director, like Larry Valman, was in the newspaper business and even worked for the city of Shoreline, Larry Valman's previous employer. So I quote what the mayor said back in April directly from the minutes. Quote, "It takes professional expertise to help with this recruitment." Madam Mayor, the UN effect said Larry Valman and Pat Adams don't have any professional experience in hiring a planning director. Then why do we have a city manager being paid close to $150,000 per year in base salary? And I'll skip over something. And basically, hiring and firing is the most important duty of a city manager. And again, you could have saved $22,000 by merely placing an ad in the Ever Herald, Seattle Times, or Tacoma News Tribune for a planning director. It would have cost only a few hundred dollars. Finally, in summary, the city manager and council waste taxpayer money. $25,000 for an open government report for ideas already, most of them submitted by individual citizens, costing no money. $22,000 for the Prothman Company. And when the city manager could easily have recruited the planning, and HR director could have recruited the planning director instead. And then $15,000, and possibly a lot more, to the mayor's private attorney, even though the recall was withdrawn according to today's Tribune. So where I come from, $62,000 is serious money that shouldn't be wasted. And that just for three samples since April. Thank you.
So I have this Hawkins?
I'm gonna pass him.
You're gonna pass? Okay. Um, here, Lisha Swiftin. Lisha, come up.
My name's Lisha. I'd like to start out by saying to the mayor that I responded to one of your Facebook posts. These are your words. The kids were told the city was going to remove the skate park. That's definitely not true, and it's too bad the kids were used to promote someone else's agenda. These are my words. I love how you took my son's expressed concerns from the Black City Council meeting and dismissed them. You also turned the voice of concern into a political blame game. Instead of taking the voice of concern to face value, you had to say that they were lied to. I am pretty sure that I'm a concerned mother who knows when her son is being lied to. I was there with my son when he was told he had those signs, and I made damn sure that he understood why. All my son set up the meeting on July 5th was that any construction done to the Hallow Pool or on that property would affect the skate park. He said seniors might complain about the skaters, and any new buildings would need parking lots. And if anything happened to the skate park, the kids who have a passion for skateboarding, scootering, and biking could turn to drugs and crime. Those all seem like very valuable concerns to me. The boys that express their concerns about the Hallow Pool, and which the property that the Hallow Pool stands on. The boys have very justifiable concerns about their skate park. Are the kids wrong? I don't think so. Those kids are more right than any of us adults who were in that meeting on July 5th. I wish you would give the boys the credit that they deserve for being sharp and articulate, not to mention having the guts to show up to a city council meeting. I am raising my children to have a voice, and trust me when I say this. My son will make sure that his voice is heard. I am sorry that you cannot handle when our youth is fighting for what they believe in. None of the boys ever said that the skate park was going to be torn down. The only people who kept saying that were the people sitting on the city council on July 5th. It absolutely sickens me to know that our chair talks down about the citizens of Snohomish, especially the children. Is that the type of chair we want running our city? I believe that all voices are due to be heard, even the youth, and even if we don't agree with each other. I don't believe in people making accusations about other people's children, especially when they were not there. So with that being said, I wish all the citizens of Snohomish good luck on choosing a strong mayor, or not. Thank you for letting me speak.
You're welcome to come up after other people have come up. Okay, we're happy to hear people.
Jerry and I signed up separately, but am I run together with the ally?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you're Jerry Elaine McLean, 1018 13th Street, number 38, Snohomish, Washington, 98234. Say anything else, Larry? Mary, she's... That's what he usually says.
Oh, my love, my darling, I hunger for your touch along lonely time. Time goes by so slowly, yet time can do so much for you. Still much, I need your love. I need your love. Godspeed your love to me. Lonely rivers flow to the sea, to the sea, to the open arms of the sea. Lonely rivers sigh, wait for me, sleep for me. I'll be coming home one day. Oh, my love, my darling, I hunger for your touch along lonely time. Time goes by so slowly, yet time can do so much for you. Still much, I need your love. I need your love. Godspeed your love to me.
Jerry, back in. Thank you, Chair.
Mercy.
If you have a couple seconds, if you want to take them. Thank you. Oh, there goes the... Ah, not like, thank you.
Can you stand here while I speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because you would also sign up.
Yep. Um, love. Karen, as mayor of Snohomish, is a good example of love. And maybe this meeting doesn't show it much, so I'd like to speak on what I've seen. Three or more years ago, when there was a controversy about whether or not Jerry could sing on First Street, a third grade boy whom I tutored with Jerry by my side told me I needed to meet the mayor. She would help us. I found her at Yoda Circle Studio, and she did help. Along with the attorney and the city manager, Jerry can now sing on First Street whenever he wants, without application in front of any business that allows him, and many businesses allow him. I've been Jerry's full-time caregiver for six-plus years. And two years later, when I needed emotional help, I came to Karen. And I said, Karen, I'd like, I'd really like to be in yoga. I don't know if I can afford it. She said she would not charge for Jerry. And I'm there under a senior discount. And I go, we go together six days a week. And it's very calming for both of us, and very good for me emotionally, physically, and mentally. And Jerry can be upset before going in and completely calm and coming up. Thank you, Karen, for that. I'm not finished. I have personally experienced Karen picking up trash on First Street, helping elderly, and guiding so many of us in yoga to take good care of ourselves, opening and opening her home to nonprofit fundraisers, and listening intently, no matter how busy she is. How many of us can say we followed that example? Yet she never would judge one of us for not doing these things. She's only supportive of everyone I've seen and leads by her example. We come here tonight to speak and to sing in gratitude for Karen as mayor, to the police for always being there and doing their very best for protecting us from crime and drugs. Thank you, thank you. For the firemen who come to the homes of elderly and replace the smoke detectors and visit with us and check in on us. To the city council, the city attorney, and the city manager, who have all worked well together to make our little city one of the brightest spots in the whole state. One of the biggest things I've learned at Karen's classes, one of the big things is when you breathe, if you need to calm down, you make your exhale longer than your inhale. So to the inhale to the count of five, and exhale to the count of seven would calm you down. And just the opposite, if you need energy. Inhale longer than the exhale. I haven't used that so many times.
And so we're gonna exhale now. It's running out of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. So we have next we have your bet.
So it's been a long six months. Lot of controversy. I think we all have, uh, we want what's best for this town. Some people may have different ideas, but at the end of the day, we all love this community. July 19th, 2016. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to obscure these rights, government are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. That whenever any form of government becomes destructive to these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its power in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. I cannot speak for the entire community of Snohomish that we all love. I'm here speaking for 218 registered voters of Snohomish. Our successful citizen-driven petition to alter or to abolish our form of government is the first in the history of Snohomish that truly may effectively change the course of city government. And we live by three little words. We the people. We the people tell the government what to do. It doesn't tell us. We the people are the driver. The government is a car. And we decide where it should go, and by what route, and how fast. Almost all the world's constitutions are documents in which governments tell the people what their privileges are. Our constitution is a document in which we the people tell the government what it is allowed to do. We the people are free. Thank you.
Chair. Well, not really. I would like to talk about some funny meetings down there. And I've gone to my survey company and made out a chart. I've been to a few meetings and I've seen some discussion. And I just want to clarify for everybody, and I hope, I hope this is helpful. In '22, this, this is where the Boys and Girls Club is. Hallow Pool is somewhere in this area up here. And this is a block, Third Street, Second Street. This is a first deed, I believe, from Snohomish County, Snohomish with PPO, for playground purposes only, 1922. This was a second deed, I think shortly thereafter, a few months, few days, weeks, I can't remember. This deed was in 1924, for playground purposes only. This was from Snohomish Playground Association. And the money was raised to buy the property from a couple in San Diego, and then they donated it to the city. Now what's neat about all this is four times, four times, a few times, playground purposes only. It's part of the legal description on this deed, and that's very important. Let's see. So 88, right here, this area here. So it's a little split. That's when playground purposes only was taken off by city of Snohomish, or Snohomish County. And then, and then shortly thereafter, a few months later, they deeded this piece of property to the school district, the North Apple, Lot 6 and 15, and all the way up here, and they put it in the Hallow Pool. Now in 2013, the school district, the same piece of property, the same legal description, the school district deeded back to the city with new covenants on it. And then in 2015, where the Boys and Girls Club is, playground purposes only was taken off on the southern part of this parcel. I think it's real relevant that when this was created, the top one, 1924, those four lots for playground purposes only in the legal description, and then when the school district puts their own deeds or restriction on the property here, I'm gonna tend to believe that this deed, because it was given to the city, dedicated to the city with that legal description, is gonna stand. And I think right now with the, what's going on in Hallow Pool area with the open market on Sundays, I think it's a direct violation of this 1924 deed. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Tibbs. As you know, we're already discussing deeds at some point in time here on the whole property. Thank you. Uh, we have Bill Fulton next. Bill, would you like to come forward?
My name is Bill Fulton. I've been a community leader in Snohomish since 1974. I'm a president of the Chamber of Commerce. I worked with the city council. I was on the fireboard. We directly traced the purchase of the police station and Riverview Wildlife Sanctuary to my name, because I started both those ideas. Recently, I've been the lead on the design, the construction, and the operation of the aquatic center, serving for the school district. That was a volunteer duty. What I want to talk about this afternoon is systems. The basis of success in any operation in a system, and in our particular case, the legal system, has made this country great. A subset of that legal concept is a corporation. That is, people like you and I gather together, pool our money, we vote amongst ourselves to elect directors who hire professional management. And with that formula, the angle Saxon history has gone forward and conquered the business world. Today, we are all beneficiaries of that, and of that system. The same concept has been extended to the citizens in our community across the country. We benefit from the concept of Snohomish because we have a kind, paid corporation where we've elected our city council members. We've directed them to hire professional management to run the affairs of community. This model has seen us well through good times and hard times. I can remember when we had to cut staff. Today, we're harvesting the benefits of our efforts. Our management team has turned our community into a viable entity. And you may have noticed that the streets are being repaired. The sewer waste problem has been addressed, and the wildlife and other parts we've added. The public has voted, the council, and management has acted. The long-term plan is working. Thank you, Mayor Kuzak, council members, city manager Larry Valman, and staff. The same form of administration is present in the school district. The recent superintendent brought the community together. He rebuilt the school infrastructure. And one of the resulting benefits that we enjoy today is the world-class bodies of professional management workers. Many of you know, there's been lots of times when I haven't been quite as positive as I am tonight. And I was very dissatisfied at one time, and so I ran for office and was elected to city council. And it quickly became apparent to me that it takes two years for a person, a city council, to understand what's going on.
Mr. Fulton?
And are we just, I'm just, I'm just done.
Wrap it up, that's it.
So what I'm saying is, we have a system that's working. We need to stick with that system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. I appreciate it. I don't have any more names on the list, but I'm very open. Jenny, can you come to speak to us, please? Yeah, can you come to the podium? Will we bring a microphone to you? Can you lie? We've got a microphone.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're happy to have you here. So name it, if you will, and name an address, please.
Uh, my name is Marie Colosa. My address is 904 Cleveland Avenue, Apartment 101, Snohomish. My name's 901. And my question for the city council is, what do I have to do to be able to take a Sunday stroll on sidewalks down First Street with my gray kids without getting shut down in my wheelchair? Um, there's many sections where it's not just cracks. The sidewalks got, like, they're uneven. Um, I tried to go to the Thursday night market a couple weeks ago, and we went, we took my wheelchair and went on the corner of First Street and Cedar. And the only place we could go down was at the corner. So we go down, there's a big hole, and my friend almost threw me in the street. So my question is, what do I have to do to be able to get around Snohomish without falling out of my wheelchair or being thrown out?
We accept your complaint, and we will certainly turn it over to our public records director. Mr. Schuler, you want to deal with this later, or do you want? He's gonna give you his card right now, and be able to talk to you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, and I'd like to meet in person with you if I can, just to understand. Obviously, it's a lot of historic area, and some of it is millions of dollars to it, but I think there might be some, just some quick fixes we can do that make a big difference. So I'd like to meet with you when you have a chance.
Yes, okay, good. Thanks, and thanks, Marie. We appreciate it. So I saw some other people moving toward the podium. We'd be glad to hear from you.
Melly Cummins, 313 Avenue D. Do I have anything prepared today? But I have been reflecting, and just wanted to say that in 2000, my life changed. It changed so much for the better. I made a decision that I wanted to become a part of this town again. That's more racist, but that doesn't mean I participate in it. Uh, so I joined you. I joined your service club. And it gave me so much for 15 wonderful years. One of them gave me a sense of awareness of what our city was all about, what our government was all about, what the needs were in our town. Um, so ultimately, I sat on the heels of the five of you. And two of you, I have, but I do know Michael, and I have Zach. But I can tell you, all of you, that we have a wonderful, hard-working city council. And like Mr. Fulton said, um, it takes a couple of years to really understand and agree to today's participation in this town, to understand what it means to govern. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the council members here, to our city manager, and our entire staff, for all of our work together. It did take me probably two years if I asked five of you if I'd taken four years to figure out what I was doing on council. But it changed me, and I have a great deal of regard and a great deal of respect for this town. And it's not always easy. I was on council with this recession, our great recession in Canton. And I've watched our city staff and our city manager present to our council a budget that would work. Um, and it wasn't easy. There were terrible times as far as the way else was concerned. You know, we came out of that, and we came out strong. Um, and we have a strong budget now. Um, we have a strong government, and we're in pretty good financial shape. And so we have our staff, our city manager, and our city council to thank for that. So I'm just here to thank you for all of our...
Thank you, Ms. Colas. Another day, so much.
Hi, I'm Heidi Loyn. I live at 725 Mill Avenue in Snohomish. And I've been a resident of the county, of the outer county, for eight years, and then in-town for another eight years. I just want to offer my appreciation for our city staff and our city council. Last summer between jobs, I had the privilege of being here from every city council meeting and just absorbing the culture of our government, and had a profound gratitude for the way that was practiced. I think our council comes from respectful backgrounds and beliefs, and participates in respectful debate with each other, listening carefully to citizen debate, listening carefully to the city staff and their information recommendations, sometimes shifting what looked to be the direction of the council vote, not always in the way that I would have chosen, but in a way that I found to be very respectful. And I think that's mainly because we, although we come from different backgrounds, we have shared values, which are the health and vitality of our city and citizens. And that we focus on brainstorming for improvements. And when people ask me what I like about Snohomish, what makes it special, I tend to respond that it's a caring town that works together with engaged people to improve our city. And so I offer my profound gratitude for your support.
Thank you so much, Ms. Loyn. We appreciate that. Anybody else, anybody else like to speak, or just comments? Or any, any subject about, let's say, your comments for other items? Yes, Megan. Yes, Megan.
I think actually we might apologize, but I'd like to reiterate. Yes, Marie. Marie. I'd like to just reiterate Marie's statements about the sidewalks and the safety. I have a son who lives in town, and a frequent conversation is avoid this area, avoid that area, so that you don't trip and fall, and he lives. And it's got to say, don't go on this block, don't go there. We came home, actually, just a few days ago, with my kids. They were trussed on the sidewalks, fell, faced him. And I'm not saying this as a threat that's not very aware of coming from. I have forgotten many times to pick up the phone and call and say, what the heck? The sidewalks in the, particularly within the Pine, and Hallow Pool, or the, but also, you know, 10th, maybe 13th, some other areas, that are very, very dangerous. And so when I say this next part, I know that there's cities that have been sued for these kinds of things. So I think it's really important to handle that. And we have, I'm telling, like, more dangerous sources, like, look, waste money here, here, and here. And then you've got serious public safety issues that it's constantly overlooked. It could cost an individual quite a bit of money in their injuries, or their life, or the city in the end. And so maybe that's important. And then I just have a question for the council. Regarding the budget, do you all... Regarding the budget, do you all review the minutes carefully, and do you all review that approval for those expenditures? Do you think it was just kind of a reassurance, okay? I'm not, I'm not trying to consult or invite, I'm asking a genuine question. Is it rubber seaters a subject that you can't really review in front of these council meetings? Is that?
I'll be glad to answer it. Generally, we do absolutely review. Usually things that are already consented yet are things that we've discussed in the past, so that we've already gone through a review process in an open meeting, and then simply then that has come to us now.
Specifically the checks, the warrants.
Oh, we review those.
Is there anybody that doesn't? No, I was open before they, no? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Lloyd.
And I appreciate everyone's opposing views. I find that very refreshing, and I have a great deal to spend for it, so keep it up, folks.
Thank you. Councilor Mott.
Just something I'm telling you, if you all review them, but every once in a while, we actually ask a question of them. So it's rare, but in those cases, we're much.
Mr. Karchak.
John Karchak, 714 Fourth Street. I don't have a prepared speech, but I wanted to comment on some of the things we've said tonight. They kind of come together. Bill Benton read from the Constitution of the United States of America, and there was a gentleman who talked about, he's happy about the way the town is assembled right now as far as the way our government is set up, because he sees it as a business model. And I'm frankly really happy to see that there's a, there's a choice now given to the people of Snohomish. Our two highest governing officials in this town, both were against it, but I'm happy because this way the townsfolk can have their say. They can decide whether they want to stay with the system we have right now or whether they want to go with the old system, the original system. And so what this original system is, it's constitutional based, it's based on a separation of powers, and the main source of those separation of powers being the people, so that the people can choose who to elect in our executive position, rather than having a separation between their free will and, you know, right now, the council decides who's going to be our executive, and this puts it in the hands of the people, and it also requires that that person live with us as a member of our community. And whichever way the people decide, I will support. I might be, I might not agree with it, but as a member of CPR Snohomish, we're community advocates, we're the ones that put the petition forward, we're the ones that went out and got the signatures. What we want to do is to support what the people want, and that's what we're about. Now, we can go back and stay as the business model, where it's a corporate, corporation type of setup.